Six o'clock. You guys ready?
Ready.
I'd like to call to order the November 3 regular meeting of the Westbridge Water School Committee. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be live streamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. The first item of business is the approval of minutes from the October 6th school committee meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I'm going to abstain as I wasn't here, so motion passed. And the warrants report, Mrs. Zardini.
Okay. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2026. For bill warrants, October 2nd, 2025, $165,085.10. On October 9th, 2025, $186,125.24. On October 16th, 2025, $355,545.18. On October 23rd, 2025, $193,260.41. On October 30th, 2025, $147,088.66. For payroll warrants, on October 10th, 2025, $660,406.87. And on October 24th, 2025, $632,116.56. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Cara. Okay, introduction of the Student Advisory Committee Representative, George Baroud. He's not with us tonight. He's playing in his playoff game, so hopefully we'll have him next time. We look forward to him joining us. Next up is public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's update. Mr. Bradwell.
Thank you very much. First order of business is to talk about the elementary school building project, just to provide some updates. We do have our community forum, I think it's our third community forum on Thursday night at 6:00 PM in the middle senior high school auditorium. But I want to present some general information and remind people to continue to check our website. There's a link directly to the school building project, updates and information. So we do have a total project budget of over $169 million. The way they do this is they get a couple of different cost estimates. They work with those two cost estimates to narrow it down to one total scope and project budget. The West Bridgewater cost would be just a little over $97 million with the remaining $72 million and change being part of the MSBA grant that we are part of. So the funding will come partly from the state and then partly from the community. A reminder that the grade configuration is K-26 with a MSBA enrollment certification of 1,075 students. The location being at the existing Rose L. McDonald site behind the existing building. It really fits the needs of the district. And when we submitted the statement of interest back in April of 2022, that we had concerns over overcrowding in the future and the aging school buildings are our two primary concerns. Some people have asked why not just replace the Rose L. McDonald, grades 1 to 3. Although that would be wonderful, it would address the age of the building. It would not address the issues with overcrowding in the future. We still would be limited to Spring Street School if we had more than five kindergarten classrooms. And the Howard School, we are maxed out, or we will be maxed out with five classrooms per grade. Using 15 classrooms, we just don't have the physical space. So at bare minimum, the building project had to include kindergarten and grade four. That would have left the Howard School as a 5-6 school, which creates other potential concerns, a small, you know, in terms of sharing staff, not being able to move staff, keep them all in one building. So that's part of the reason why the scope of the project is bigger and the expense is bigger. The goal is to create a new school building that meets the students and the staff for the next 50 years. The new building will also be used not only as a school building, but also as a community building, both inside and out. So our goal is to make sure that building is used as frequently as possible. Same thing with the middle senior high school. People have asked about the average tax increase. The town is working on that. They are going to put a link on the building project website. So people, I believe how it will work is people will plug in their actual address, which will pull up their assessed value, which will then show the actual tax increase. So they haven't finished that. We hope to test it out over the next couple of days, so it will be ready to go Thursday night. When we look at cost comparison, this building here, the middle senior high school, back in 2015, when it opened, it cost approximately $63 million. Using today's valuation and cost per square foot, it would be about $159 million. So costs have escalated over the years. When we look at costs, we look at repair costs. If we were to simply repair the Rose L. McDonald and the Howard School adding no additional spaces, it would be $96 million compared to the new school at $97 million. So that's just to bring everything up to code. Again, not adding additional spaces. And the goal is hopefully, again, this goes to the town, that's why we want to get as much information so people can make informed decisions. But the reality is this project, come this January, will be in progress and work for about four years. We started creating the statement of interest in January, submitted in April of 2022. So it's taken us basically four years to get to this point. If it doesn't move forward, the West Bridgewater will go back on a list eventually. And we'll talk about that Thursday night, what that timeline might look like and the costs that may, you know, change over that time. Again, there'll be a lot of information presented Thursday night. I think it's also going to be live streamed. There'll be tapes, so we'll be able to present that information. Any specific questions about the project, the scope?
I just want to add a couple of things, being the representative on the school building committee for the school committee. You know, this project is a little bit controversial on social media. It is going to cost a lot of money. It's controversial in town. But one of the things that I wanted to mention was, you know, at the last meeting, the cost was discussed quite a bit. And the consultants showed, you know, the chart of what it would cost in overtime. And the cost per square foot for this building is still below average. So it is, it is a lot of money. It's going to have a huge tax impact, but it is desperately needed. And, you know, some of the discussion points that have come up that I've seen on social media and around town is this school is fancy. It's really fancy. It is. It's pretty. It's very pretty. But the thing is, it's not fancy. It is still below average in terms of how much we're spending or would be spending. And it's designed based on how students in 2025 learn. It's not what we grew up with. It's not, you know, basic. It has a lot of breakout spaces for differentiation of instruction and the research really supports that. So any school that's built in 2025 is going to look like that. So, you know, when we use the term fancy or designer, I know that was a term that was thrown around as well, it really isn't. And I think that it's really important that when people get out to vote that they're educated on, yes, there is going to be a huge tax impact, but also there will be a tax impact if we don't do it. And, you know, as you said, bumping us to the end of the list and then kicking the can down the road, it's going to be even more costly down the line. So I just hope that people get out to the community forums and, you know, watch the school building meetings and really be informed before they go out and vote and certainly come out and vote. Make an educated decision.
Thank you. And a couple of other things that we really don't think of, ask on a roll with Rosa. I'll be honest, when we did this four years ago, we thought we would be at that point now. We're not in terms of overcrowding, but the design enrollment the MSBA has looked into is over the next 30 to 50 years. So we're anticipating growth within that time. But as we continue to grow, a couple of things are going to happen. One is we will continue to limit the number of school choice students we can take at the elementary level. We do take high school because we have students go off to vocational schools, so there's going to be spaces there. But the more students we lose at the elementary level, the less funding we have to go into our school contributions, which will have to be made up somewhere. And the other cost, when we do get to a point of overcrowding, will be modular classrooms. Anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 per classroom. Then there will be safety concerns where their place, you know, we don't have a great amount of space. They'll be taking play areas or parking areas and they would obviously have to, you know, get them back into the school building. So those are some additional costs that will happen over time. And again, the square foot cost, thank you for bringing that up. I believe for this building, the square foot cost was around 300 or a little over 300. The average cost now is getting up to about $1,000 per square foot and we're around 700, I think.
Yeah, I think we're like just shy of 800.
Yeah. So again, that's the average. So we showed that slide was, I think, impactful because it showed that we're not, you know, building this grand building. It's going to have the great spaces, but we've also worked hard to limit the amount of space. We know more space means more money.
You mentioned the repair costs for Rose L. and Howard. I think you said $96 million?
Correct.
That doesn't even take into account what Spring Street would need as well.
Correct.
Correct.
Obviously, they're not in an abrupt shape, but that's another additional cost I would assume down the line.
It would be.
To clean that up and it would put us now over that $97 million that we're looking at for a new school.
Correct. And then this slide just shows some of the opportunities for information to be put out and also for us to gather information. So we are again at the community forum this Thursday. We'll have future ones. A lot of similar same information will be presented, but again, we want to make sure we're giving everyone the opportunity to hear it and to ask questions. We're hoping to have the architects and our OPM will be with Gary Keith and myself at events, you know, potentially future football games, basketball games or any other event. We'd like to get in with groups, Lions Club, potentially PTO boosters, just so again, they can hear the information. We're putting information out through the website, newsletters, emails and Facebook. We do have some videos coming out on the project. They'll give people some really very important information. We do have weekly meetings virtually and in person, myself, every Thursday morning at 8:00 AM. If people want to just drop in, ask a couple of questions and leave, both in person or through the Google Meet. And again, we encourage people, I have had a few emails, probably three or four emails, questions related to the neighborhood, what impact it may have on that, traffic, things like that. So I've hopefully answered the information, you know, they've asked, but I think it's important that people have questions to reach out just so you can be informed of what's going on. Next, my roundtable meeting. So I have had meetings with student groups at the Rose L. McDonald, Howard, middle school students and my high school students, superintendent council meetings. A lot of great information is shared. We're discussing both positive things that are going on in each of the buildings as well as issues or concerns in real time. When I meet with them, then I will always share information with the building principal to get their feedback and input. And I think it's important, we talked about, with the superintendent council at our last meeting, we talked about cell phone policy, how that's going. Bring your own device, their feelings on how, you know, they're issued Chromebooks, but also wanting to bring in their own devices. We talked about it at our admin meeting today. I know Mrs. Page is talking with her principals council about things. So they're not just opportunities to talk to students. Hopefully they're impactful and we're moving forward with things within the school. And I have completed visits of three of the four schools. I had to cancel my meeting at the Howard School, but that is coming up very soon. Good opportunity again to hear the staff voice, hear what they have concerns about or things that they feel are going well. We've talked about things such as student safety, professional development, the building project, cellphone and technology, talking initial feelings on the FY '27 budget. So we'll do the fall meetings and I'm also going to schedule a meeting with them in the winter and the spring. Tendence has been good. People are able to come. We've gotten eight to 10 people from each of the schools. And then hopefully that will grow over time and they always know they can reach out to me with any questions or concerns. And finally, the surveys. This year, the surveys, instead of sending three different surveys, we have one survey with three parts. The first part being the climate and culture questions. And then questions about bullying, part of our bullying intervention and prevention plan. And the final part is the institutional self-evaluation. It was shared mid-October. It'll run through November 14th. Information is done through a Google form. It is completely anonymous. There's no way to track information. But there is a place for people to put, if they want to be contacted, and a few people have, they've put down their number. I've shared that with our principals and they've reached out to them. Links are shared in the newsletters and emails and postings on the website and Facebook. We're not putting the actual link out there, but we are reminding people that an email has been sent for them to look for the Google form. And again, it's feedback for us. We've gotten about 21%, 22% of the families responding so far. So I think with a few weeks ago, that's pretty decent. Probably close to or exceeding half, 50% for our staff, which I think is good as well. And in the end, I will provide an executive summary to share information, share all the pie charts so people can see all the information. And hopefully again, we make adjustments to practice as necessary to continue to move us forward. All right, Mrs. Yanis is going to give us an MCAS overview.
Most exciting time of the night. So our district status overview is we are not requiring assistance or intervention. And our progress is substantial progress towards our targets. So that's the good news. A lot of it's good news. In ELA, in grade 10, the district had 49% of students meeting or exceeding expectations while the state had 51% meeting or exceeding. So we're performing slightly below the state in grade 10 ELA. In grades 3 to 8 ELA, 43% of our students are meeting or exceeding compared to the state's 41%. So we're a little bit above that and I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get to some key takeaways. Grade 10 math, the district is performing at 43% meeting or exceeding and the state is 45%. So we're a little below the state again. In grades 3 to 8 math, the district is 40% meeting or exceeding and the state is 41% meeting or exceeding. In science, grades 9 and 10, the district is 33% meeting or exceeding and the state is 39% meeting or exceeding. That's our biggest gap right there.
And just to clarify, that's the biology exam that all of our ninth graders are taking, kind of an end of course assessment. There are choices to take some of the technology one, the physics one. There's other ones that some districts are choosing to take at a different grade level. We've always gone with the ninth grade biology.
Grades 3 to 8 science, our district had 39% meeting or exceeding and the state was 42%. And grade 8 civics, our district is 38% meeting or exceeding and the state is 39% meeting or exceeding. So some of the key takeaways, we're exceeding the state average in ELA in grades 3 to 8. And we're slightly below state average in most other categories with the largest gap in the high school science. So for some next steps and focus areas, we're going to continue to strengthen literacy initiatives in the elementary and middle school to sustain our ELA success. We're actually part of a Columbia University implementation study right now. And that's for districts that use WIT and Wisdom. And we were invited by the state to participate in this opportunity. And it'll equip us as leaders with actionable information that we can use on how teachers are using the curriculum. And it'll help us make more data-informed incisions and understand how implementation can change over time. So we're working with the Center for Public Research and Leadership at Columbia University. And it gives us access to what they call the Curriculum Implementation Change Framework, the CICF. And it's a management framework and a suite of tools designed to help us improve curriculum implementation. So I did an observation today and I did two last week over at the Howard. And tomorrow we have someone from Columbia to come help us because we have a lot of observations to do. Each teacher has to be observed three times. So someone's coming tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday to observe nine teachers. And then we also have someone coming to work with the admin to do like co-observations so we calibrate our observation tool. All the data that's collected is anonymized and it gives us information as a district, not by teacher. We're also using data-driven instruction to identify and support students below the proficiency threshold in ELA. We use DIBELS and STAR testing for that. We talked about this today at our admin meeting, the need to update some math curriculum and science curriculum in the near future. That'll help boost our scores. Right now it's kind of a hodgepodge. Keith, did you want to speak to what you noticed the third grade takeaways were?
Sure. So the third grade team started looking at the MCAS results and kind of looking at each item and what standards we did really well on and what we did not. Our writing has looked the best it has in years, so that was really promising. An area they found was any questions that had to do with character development, whether it's point of view or anything to do with fictional characters, our students did not do well on. Looking at the curriculum we're using right now, WIT and Wisdom is really strong on nonfiction. So naturally they're not experiencing those texts every day. So we just started talking about how we can do some novel studies and things to start incorporating some of that in to hopefully see an improvement for next year.
And WIT and Wisdom has a volume of reading for each grade level and they have plenty of texts in there to choose from to help us. Any questions?
Can I just ask a possibly stupid question?
No questions are stupid.
Not to the District or the State, but does the meeting, so the meeting and exceeding, they do this at the end of the year, right?
Yes.
So meeting is like if I'm in grade four, I'm meeting grade four?
So MCAS has four levels, exceeding, meeting, partially meeting and not meeting.
Okay, so this is partially.
Yeah.
Because in my mind, I'm like, are we sending, it sounds like not just us, the state too. Like we're advancing 60% of the kids grade that they're not actually meeting the skill. That's, is that the correct interpretation of data?
It's the standards that they're being assessed on.
Is it possible to get this data now? Just is it available to see how much of this is meeting and how much is exceeding?
Yep.
I think that would be helpful.
And also the partially meeting is, you know, that's what we look at to get them to those two islands. What group are, you know, can we move up? We're always looking to move students up in groups.
More than a handful of students that are one point away from meeting, always.
And then is this like, historical question here, is this like normal data or is this like post-COVID data or what's?
So actually, our data's been looking better. I think last year we had fifth grades outscored the state by a lot.
Are we, sorry to interrupt, but so I know when we get our score sheets on our children, there's like a student growth percentile. Does the district, is the district also assigned a student, a growth percentile?
Yeah, that's part of our not requiring any intervention piece.
Yeah, okay. Because to me, when I think about what interventions are working, how are we growing compared to ourselves? I mean, yeah, I like to see how we compare to the state, but what improvements are we making? How are interventions working? So I'm curious about that.
Right, and that's a good point because if we weren't showing that growth, then we would be, if we weren't closing that gap to meeting our target, then that would be more concerning to the state and obviously for us as well.
Yeah, so we had substantial progress towards our targets this year. The state gives us a target and we've had substantial growth towards it.
Yeah, I would love to see our, over the last few years, rather than comparing to the entirety of the state, I think.
Yeah, I think one year, you know, one year is just a snapshot.
Yeah, like five years.
And looking at the cohorts of students because the students are changing every year.
I mean, I don't data, so I'm.
That's good.
No, I have, believe me, I have spreadsheets.
I think what's also interesting is when you look at Massachusetts compared to the rest of the country and you look at the NEEP, which is the National Education of Educational Progress, that tests students in grades 4, 8 and 12 in writing, reading, mathematics and science. Massachusetts is always top three. So although we are very hard on ourselves, I think, for MCAS, which is good, I think, but we continue to do well nationally as a state.
Do we have a large percentage that opt out?
We had more last year, I think, than in a few previous years, but even a few extras have a negative impact. But that'll be part of our discussion.
I think mostly at the high school they were absent, but November has makeups. John?
Thank you.
Talk technology, yes.
So Mark, Mark wanted to put this video in to start, which is so funny. This was played at the MasQ Technology Conference a couple of weeks ago. And the keynote speaker showed this video and it was just a great kind of like, you know, how did, you know, these celebrities look at technology back in 1994?
So I think when you see it, this is how we're looking at AI.
Yeah, the purpose of the show in the video was comparing like what, how radical and new the internet was back in the mid-'90s. Now we're seeing this new technology called AI that's coming out and no one, again, kind of the same thing. We don't really know what it is, what it's going to do, what its capabilities are. So just kind of making that connection. So it's a good video.
And that's for our educators and our kids. I think our kids are like, they know certain things, but they're, you know, I think their mind is blown by the possibilities and same thing for our educators.
Prepare to translate that as those two have a little tease. And then Mark with the A and then the ring around it, at, see, that's what I said. Kay said she thought it was about.
Yeah.
But I've never heard it, I've never heard it said. I've always seen Mark, but never heard it said. And then it sounded stupid when I said it, violence at NBC.
Yeah, I heard you around your family.
There it is, violence at NBC G E com. I mean.
Well, Allison should know.
What is NBC anyway?
Internet is that massive computer network, the one that's becoming really big now.
What do you mean, that's big? What do you write to it like mail?
No, a lot of people use it and communicate. I guess they can communicate with NBC writers and producers. Allison, can you explain what internet is?
No, she can't say anything in 10 seconds of words.
Allison will be in the studio shortly.
It's a giant computer network made up, made up of, started from.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell us what this was.
It's like a computer billboard.
It's not, it's a computer billboard, but it's made from lines. It's several universities and everything all joined together.
Right. And others can access it.
Right. And it's getting bigger and bigger.
It can be really handy during the quake. A lot of people, that's how they work. A lot of people, that's how they were communicating out, just tell family and loved ones they were okay because all the phone lines were down.
I was telling Katie another time.
You don't need, you don't need a, you don't need a phone line to operate either? No.
So a little, little bit of a flashback. So Mark just wanted us to take some time and talk about some of the things that have been going on in technology, really coming from the conference that we went to. So the MasQ conference is an annual conference of technology leaders, educators. It was at Gillette Stadium. And this year was a little different. It was, it was very, obviously it was very AI-focused, but it was a lot on, you know, kind of getting a grasp of what AI is in the classroom, what, what the potential is, safety concerns, privacy concerns, all of that stuff. So, you know, when we came out of MasQ, we were able to send, seven of us ended up going to this conference. It was, what was it, three admin, four teachers and three administrators went. So, and we all got to pick and choose our own, you know, sessions that we wanted to attend. But when we came back, it was a little bit, I guess, invigorating, you know, a lot of excitement around this new technology and how can we use this in West Bridgewater? So at the same time, we've been talking probably since last year about developing some kind of AI policy. And this was kind of a good stepping stone. We gathered some good resources and, you know, we're, we're starting an early draft of not really a policy, but guidelines to help teachers use AI effectively and safely in the classroom with students and also showing students how to use it appropriately. It's not just a tool to do your work for you. It, it needs to be used to, as a guide for their work, but still allowing them to have their own thoughts and their own feelings about their work and such. So, so that's, you know, what we've been talking about with AI the last couple of weeks. Other hot topics at the conference was data privacy with, even around AI. You know, we're, we're feeding these computer systems so much, we want to make sure that our student data is protected. So that was a huge thing. And I always get anxiety because I always go to cybersecurity sessions and hearing horror stories of, about, you know, making sure your, your cyber network is, is safe. So, so that was one of the, one of the sessions that I attended. So, but when we talk about AI, one of the best quotes that I heard at, at the conference, it probably isn't one of the keynotes, but they said the worst version of AI is what you see today. And that's the way the internet was back then. You know, the worst version of the internet was, was, you know, then and it only got better. You know, look, look where, where it's gone in thirty years and AI is the same way. So the worst version of it is today. It's going to get better tomorrow. It's going to get better as we grow and the more things we can do with it. So we just, you know, we kind of want to try to stay on top of it as much as we want to, even though we probably won't, but at least we're acknowledging it. So talking about what we did with AI in, in West Bridgewater, okay? So we went to, we attended a virtual workshop, Debbie, Christine, Mark and myself on building an AI policy for your district. And it was a great time for us to work collaboratively, working on this document, getting some feedback from the instructors, hearing from what other schools are doing about AI in their districts. And we were able to come up with a pretty solid draft based on the resources that they gave us. You know, based examples from other schools, we were able to use that. A lot of guidance from DESI's new AI in schools guidelines, policy, draft, sorry, document that they released this past spring, which has been a very helpful document. A lot of schools have been using that and it's been a good, a good resource for us. And we're going to be sharing that with teachers as well on, on the use of AI. And then finally, lastly, on the topic of, of AI, we do have a team from Dartmouth Public Schools coming up in December and they, I got wind of the AI professional development they've been doing in their district. So I spoke to them and they're willing to send a team up here to work with one group with the high school and another group with the elementary school, talking about, you know, how they use AI and what they feel are the, the best approaches to use AI in the classroom, how students can use it, resources they can use, and obviously using it effectively and safely and all that stuff. So it's, it's been a busy fall. It's been very, very good busy, busy work. It's been, it's been great. So much new technology. Yeah, no, it's not busy work, but it's, it's.
It's work.
Yes. And it's, it's things, things we have to do because the AI is out there. You know, we also heard the term like, you know, we can't put the toothpaste back in the, in the tube. It's out there. So we have to embrace it. We know it's here. How are we going to use it? And, you know, just make sure that we're, we're using it appropriately.
And to help the teachers, there's so much out there. When we left the conference, I must have bookmarked twenty-five things in one, in one session alone. And I, when I got home, I'm like, oh, I want to try this. I want to try this. But there's, it's overwhelming. So to have some sort of support for the teachers so they're not overwhelmed when we do set up some policies and guidance.
And it was exciting, like you said, when teachers came back from that and they're, you know, creating storyboards using AI.
One of the teachers was creating them before we even left the conference.
So and then that becomes, you know, good practice within the, the school, the grade level and other people using it. But again, it's the responsible use of it and to, to make their job, I think in some ways easier, but to make it more engaging for our students. Thank you.
Any questions? Feelings, thoughts?
No, I think it's great.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So last Thursday, we had a multilingual family night. It was very well attended. I would say probably ninety percent of our multilingual families were there. We had pizza and salads and apple crisp. And there were plenty of activities for the students to do while their families listened to the ESL teachers explain the different aspects of school in West Bridgewater. The teach, the kids were all engaged. They had door prizes. So I think almost all the kids left with something. And it was, it was a really nice night. It was a busy night because volleyball was going on, football was going on, chair was waiting to be using the cafeteria. So it was busy, but it was well attended.
It was exciting to see how excited they were to be there. And I think we're also happy so many people came out. It wasn't a very nice night either. It was kind of rainy and cold.
Want to thank the teachers that helped out. Mrs. Pope in that picture is doing a science experiment with the students. But we also had teachers from Roselle, teachers from Howard, teachers from Spring Street there, as well as the ESL teachers.
And that was huge because I, I think that made the students and the families feel very comfortable.
It was so nice to see some of the students at Roselle now come back, see their kindergarten teachers and they were just so happy. So it was, it was a really good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right, moving on to new business. We have the Competency Determination Plan, which I understand administration has been working on at length. Do you want to kind of give us a?
I'll give you a little overview. It has been shared with you. It's my failure to give it to you, to let you review it. And then our next meeting, we can go over again, our interim questions, you can certainly ask them. So this came out of the, the vote by the Massachusetts citizens where we took away the MCAS graduation requirement. So now each city or each school district is responsible for determining the competency determination, basically the grade ten equivalent courses. So in that way, it's very straightforward, what courses they need to take to show mastery and completion, having a passing score of those tenth grade classes. This is a bit different from the graduation requirements, which are still a local decision, but including this document, also see the graduation requirements, which, you know, I think ours are the most rigorous with the four years of the major core subjects. It's, students would still be responsible for at the grade ten level sitting for the MCAS. I think that's important, goes back to the accountability for our MCAS scores. And we hope that they will perform well and show what they know, but it won't be, passing it won't be part of the competency determination. So there's a lot of information in there, there's a lot of required information and then there's specific West Bridgewater things in there. So open for questions or thoughts and then next month we'll go back at it.
So this needs to be submitted to DESI by December thirty-first?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll plan to vote on it on our next meeting.
Perfect.
But is this a document that needs to, one of those documents that needs to be resubmitted annually or?
Well, I think from what we know, they're going to, they're going to take all the different districts.
Yeah.
And then they're going to look at that. And they've also talked about creating a high school graduation requirement.
Yeah, this has to be uploaded into our grant management system, which makes no sense to me. So the, the template you have to follow. So that's why graduation requirements are in there because they're asking questions about that as well. Yeah. I hope it's not something we have to do annually.
I mean, I would think that there won't be many changes annually, maybe some small changes, but I think it would remain pretty consistent over the years.
Yeah, so that would, that was my, my next question. If there are changes, can we resubmit it any time or is it like health insurance where there's an enrollment period?
Yeah, they haven't said, they've given us that one deadline, same thing they did with the CTE for the pathways. It's submit it once and then they'll get back.
They'll let us know. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions about the competency determination plan?
No.
No? Okay. Next up, we have the resolutions for the MASC Annual Delegate Assembly. I'm going to pass it over to you, Kara, as our representative.
So I'm hoping that everyone had a chance to look over the resolutions that were sent out from MASC. This year, there's only one new resolution being proposed as compared to last year, there were ten. So it's a nice, light year. And the first resolution, unless there are questions, I won't go into too fine of detail, but it's proposing to remove BMI testing from schools where MASC is, if it passes, would be urging the removal of BMI screening requirements from public schools and MASC would be urging the express banning of BMI screening in all public schools. Is there any, are there any questions about that resolution? Do we feel ready to take a vote as a committee on how you would like me to vote at the conference?
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of voting for the resolution? Aye?
And voting for is just to be clear, it's to remove it?
Is to remove it, yes. Aye. So, and I don't have to ask what the nay is because no one's saying nay. And then in addition to the one resolution being proposed, there are six resolutions that are set to expire if they are not renewed. Those are one regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students, one to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund, membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, one involving preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools, one involving personal financial literacy education, and the last one is establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. So what we can do, unless you have questions about a specific resolution, we can vote them as a slate, which is what they would do at the meeting, unless anyone has questions about a certain one, which we can hold. So just to read them again, if you have questions about a specific one, just say hold and I'll take it off. So regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students, to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund, membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools, personal financial literacy education, and establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. Okay, so we'll vote these as a slate. All in favor of voting to renew the six resolutions? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
And none opposed. Okay, super. So that is how I will vote at the meeting. It'll be Friday, November fourteenth.
Okay. Thank you, Kara. All right, moving on, the CPAC update. The mission of the West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to help build inclusive schools and communities. We support families of students with IEPs and 504 plans. And we also welcome and include general education parents by offering advice, advocacy, educational opportunities and community building events. Later this month, we're pleased to welcome back Christine Riley from Cape Cod Advocate for our first workshop of the year, Basic Rights in Your Child's IEP. Join us on Tuesday, November eighteenth, from six to seven thirty to learn about your legal rights in special education and gain practical strategies to advocate effectively for your child. The workshop will be held via Zoom with links shared through our mailing list and Facebook page. We'll also live stream the event here in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons where parents and guardians are invited to join us for in-person participation. On Friday, December fifth, we will be marking International Day of People with Disabilities with our annual Rock Your Socks Day in WB schools. Students and staff are invited to support the WBCPAC with a donation and wear extra funky or mismatched socks to celebrate how being different rocks. For more information about the WBCPAC upcoming events or to join our mailing list, you can find us on Facebook or email, email us anytime at wbcpac@gmail.com. Okay, next up, report of the Student Advisory Committee. George is not here with us, but I understand he emailed you.
He did.
An update to share with us?
Yes. So again, this is George's update from his voice. Good evening. I am George Baroud, student representative to the school committee and a junior at the Middle Senior High School. I'd like to provide an update on recent events from the student perspective. Soccer's playoff game was scheduled for today and it was cleared by faculty to, for me to play tonight and attend the next meeting. There are a few topics I would like to discuss today. First, I would like to appreciate our athletics as many teams are doing very well this season. We have playoffs and high ranks for our football, our boys and girls soccer, field hockey, cross country and volleyball, with cross country winning the championship and other teams' playoffs continuing. Furthermore, I would like to discuss computers. There was a recent rule banning any sort of home computer and requiring students to use school-issued computers. I respect this rule, but there have been many errors in the school-issued computers lately. One being many things are getting blocked. The source isn't a block in YouTube, but yet the entire page gets blocked. This is an issue as many school assignments are being blocked. Another one being the computers simply being slow due to age. I also believe that the homecoming went very well. We had a ton of students attending with little problems and more money towards our school's student council team. Lastly, I would like to end on our gym classes. I believe it has been previously discussed, but the entire student advisory committee was in agreement that we have too much time spent in gym class in comparison to our core subjects with too little being done in the actual class. I would recap this month as being less eventful as the others, but yet very positive. Thank you for your consideration towards student interests. And if any of you have any questions, never hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you. So yeah, so I actually met with the students last week. We talked largely about the things that George highlights in his update. The Chromebooks, the one thing they were saying that, I don't know if it came through in his update, was when their searches get blocked, it blocks the entire search results, not just the specific search results that would be YouTube-related. And then one of the students mentioned that in the midst of doing research, once things get blocked, then you can't back page to go back. You have to start over from scratch and might have lost things that you were working on. So that was interesting that they shared that with me. They showed me on the Chromebook as well. Other than that, that was pretty much what we talked about this week, so.
Was the computer thing new or has that always been the policy?
I think it's, it's always been encouraged to use the school-issued Chromebooks for a number of reasons and, but it's, this year they're more enforcing that. But what's nice, I think, is that the student voice is coming out not only in your groups, but also in our superintendent council meetings. And honestly, we talked about with the faculty, so the staff voice, they've got reasons why they feel it's important for them to use the school-issued one. So, and then we're talking about it as an admin team. So it's, it's kind of full circle, all these discussions. And like most things, it, it takes some time to discuss, to look into, to vet what's the best option to move forward, but we're continuing that discussion. It's not just they say and we say, okay, thanks for saying it and we're, we're moving on. We're, we're getting their feedback and then we're going to see what's best for the school, the district and students and staff.
And the other thing I just want to mention that they were very eager to get an AI policy in place. So I think they'll be excited for that to come down the line because both in terms of using it appropriately and rules about how not to use it, they are aware that it's they are aware that it's very much needed, so that's great.
And in that, we mentioned, you know, that's gonna be a living document that wants things, you know, we need to change and adapt and modify, that's gonna be a, a document that we'll be able to do that throughout.
Can we look into, and I look out into the audience because we have Mr. Collins here with us tonight. Can we look into the, the page blocking because that is, and maybe there's nothing that can be done, but it's frustrating and inefficient if you're searching and then everything gets blocked and then you have to start over, so.
Yeah, we've, we've actually talked a little bit about that already, so.
Great. And then I know there was some mention of phys ed as well, which we do have the wellness policy open. So I think, you know, I have some, some, some questions about that, but we'll hold that discussion until we get to the, to those policies, which are coming up next. Does anyone have any other questions about the student, about update? Okay, good. All right, so moving on to report of the subcommittees. We have the Policy Subcommittee, we have several policies open. So I'm gonna start with the previous policies open from September. Is there a motion to approve the open policies JJE, student fundraising activities, and KBE, relations with parent booster organizations?
I'm sorry, you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion, yeah.
To?
To approve policies JJE and KBE. They're the student fundraising activities and relations with parent booster organizations.
Move to approve JJE and KBE.
Is, is there a second? All right, discussion on these. So the, as I said, these were open in September. I know that we had some discussion last, last month and Mr. Bodwell's gonna do a little research. The language is new to the policy, that this updated language about raffles and 501(c)(3). It's new to the policy, but it is not new to state law. So I'm gonna turn it over because I know you spoke with our attorney and have drafted the organization guidelines. So if you could give us an update on that.
Correct, so, thank you. The organizational guidelines drafted by the attorney. We, we said we needed a good starting point for our organization so they could review this information, find relevant links to the, both the law and our existing policies. So I think that's where we are now, looking at our parent organizations and saying, what's the best fit? Where they are, are they not a 501(c)(3) at this point? What they need to do to get that and what some of the potential limitations are if they're not. So we've got that drafted. I think right now, we're ready to share it out with the organizations to gather, so they can have more information. And then we'll certainly be able to work with each of the organizations to help them navigate the process. I think they're all in a bit different place in, in their path towards this. So I think it's good to recognize where we're at and where we need to be eventually.
Do you have a general update as to where each of the organizations are? I mean, I know as the representative for the CPAC, CPAC already has the 501(c)(3) status.
I think some are very close or some have submitted paperwork, others, I'm not 100% sure, so I don't wanna speak to that just because I don't wanna say misinformation. But I think that in my next communication out, we got the stuff from the attorney last week. So I wanted to wait till we had this meeting and then share it out with each organization and ask them for an update on where they're at.
Okay, great.
Are there five organizations, is that what?
Right now.
CPAC boosters, arts boosters, Gridiron, PTO?
That sounds accurate. I think that's it, right on.
I know the arts boosters are in process, they did forward their information.
Correct.
Right? They submitted and are just waiting to hear back. So I've made a note for future agendas to just follow up on this because I'd like to be kept apprised, as I'm sure we all would. Is there any other questions on these policies or discussion? I know it will change practice for a lot of, a lot of organizations in town. And we are speaking to an attorney in town, or I'm sorry, an accountant in town. This is not, this is not only us. There are a lot of districts across the state who are struggling with this because, so as I said, the law is not new. Specifically, the raffle law, it's not new, but it's kind of been a gray area as to how it's been applied. So, all right, any further discussion? All right, all in, all in favor of passing these to JJE and KBE? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. All right, so we also have IKFE competency determination open from September. And the Policy Subcommittee is recommending that we just continue to hold this until the competency determination document is finished and then we can kind of tie it up with a bow as it is under.
And we've worked hard to make, to ensure that everything within that policy is captured in what's to be submitted to the state. So it's also cross-referenced.
Great. Okay, and then we have the A policies. These were opened in October. Is there a motion to approve the open A policies? So we have AA, school district legal status, AB, the people in their school district, AD, mission statement, philosophy statement, ADC, tobacco and smoking on school premises, ADDA, background checks, ADDA-r, the DCJIS model query policy, ADF, school district wellness program, and AE, commitment to accomplishment.
Motion to approve the A policies.
Second? Okay, so just really quickly, a handful, so, so these were all independently reviewed. The Policy Subcommittee did not meet this last month. I reviewed some, Christine reviewed some, and we consulted with Mr. Bodwell on just procedural compliance. None of these policies had any changes, they were all in line with MASC. So there were no checks required for AA, school district legal status, AB, the people in their school district, and AE, commitment to accomplishment. So those are as-is, no changes, no checks required. AD, the mission statement, philosophy statement, should be reviewed by us as a committee. So if we wanna take a minute to look at that, to make sure that it is in line with our philosophy as a school committee, there have been no changes to it since it was initially reviewed, I believe, in September of 2023. So if you'd like to take a minute to pull that up? I don't know that it's necessary that I read it all. Does anyone have any questions about it? Do we feel that it continues to reflect our values and what we represent as? Okay. Looks good. Okay. So from there, we have ADC, tobacco and smoking on school premises. Again, no changes to this. I did ask some, some compliance checks for Mr. Bodwell. So just out of curiosity, how many incidents of student discipline has there, have there been over the last year? You did share that information with me?
Correct. So yeah, so none at the Howard or Roselle and at the Middle Senior High Schools had eight incidents involving five students.
Okay, so this was, this was last year and this year to date, right?
Correct.
I'm assuming vain, vain mostly?
Yes.
So anyone have any questions about that? And then the other question was whether or not we had signs posted for tobacco being prohibited on school, school grounds, as this is stated in the policy, that we will have signs and those are in progress.
In progress, and we have them. They will be done and they're kind of, you know, making them now, but they're gonna do a couple at each of the fields and then at each of the schools.
Any questions on that? All right, and then ADDA and ADDA-r kind of go together. They're all related to background checks and queries. And these were really, really dense policies, just related to how we run query checks, how frequently, how they're stored, making sure everyone is up to date. So if you just wanna kind of give us a summary of how we're in compliance there, that would be great.
The executive system keeps a shared doc with the school secretaries, so they know who's up and when they're up. They are constantly checking them. All of them are stored at central office in a locked, fireproof cabinet and so they, we can go back and reference them at any time. They will use that shared database to look into who's up for staff every year or as they come up, depending on when they were last done, over three years. And when we get requests for field trips, they'll check the name, they'll look at the date and have them complete a new one if they are expired.
Is three years standard for a query? Is that just?
Yes. It is, yeah. And queries are only gonna pick up any offenses in Massachusetts. That's why we do fingerprinting for our, our staff. That's nationwide.
Any other questions there? No? Okay, and then the last policy we have open is ADF, the school district wellness program. So there were a couple of questions here. So the wellness committee, so it states in here, the wellness committee will meet four times per year, which I know is kind of been variable over the last, the last couple of years and that will receive a wellness, a report from the wellness coordinator. So I'd like to see that we get an update from the wellness coordinator, maybe at our January meeting, as this policy was reviewed last January, 2024. So that'll be the year mark.
Perfect. Definitely do that.
Okay. And then are we still in compliance? There is a, for, for the new members of the committee, there is a West Bridgewater edit in this policy that is different from MASC. And it's a line that states that we will not withhold opportunities for physical activity, meaning recess, PE, as a form of discipline. This was specifically born out of some complaints that were received at the elementary level as students where recess was being withheld. So I just wanna make sure that we're still.
Yeah, unless there's real extenuating circumstances, but on a best practice, it's not withheld.
Yep, great. And it does say that unless there are some safety, if there are safety concerns, then of course it can be, you know, a student can be withheld from recess. And then there were some questions regarding physical education. This is a pretty dense policy as well. So I know, Mr. Waller, you had some things you wanted to mention about PE and I had some questions as well.
Yeah, I guess being more from the parent side than the school committee side, when my son came into middle, senior high schools, first time I got his schedule, I was just, I guess, surprised by the amount of PE he was taking as opposed to like what are kind of traditional, more core subjects. And I think the student body seems to feel the same way. So personally, I just think we should kind of look into other avenues where, I don't know what the state law is regarding PE, so I guess we'd have to figure that out first. But just kind of lessening the PE and kind of bringing in either more core subjects or maybe some less traditional subjects that, you know, we aren't introducing at that level. I don't know if there's like a committee that does this sort of stuff or looks into it, but I'd be happy to help out.
So, you know, I've had conversations with Mrs. Page about this. I know she's talked to the PE coordinator for PE and health. There are, state guidelines are vague at best. They state something similar to every student should have physical education during the year, so they're not, they don't list minutes, although there are recommended minutes you'll find from different organizations. I can't cite the organization off the top of my head, but I believe it's, I think the number's like 235 minutes a week. We average 200 minutes a week for, you know, PE for our students over a two-week period. I have talked to her about some other opportunities that may exist for students that are health-related or social, emotional, learning-related, nutrition-related, that could also help educate our students. Potentially looking at, we have a four-year graduation requirement, but, but a full year of PE and health in ninth and 10th grade and a half-year requirement in 11 and 12. So all students at the Middle Senior High School do take eight courses. It is one of the eight courses. When they get to high school, they have more opportunities for electives, so they can select courses that are within, maybe a field of study or a track that they wanna go into. And at the middle school level, they're gonna have some exploratory classes as well as some plus classes to have different courses as well. So I think it's part of a whole package for the, all children to be, you know, fit and well and get exercise and get outside, hopefully. And it's been, you know, that's been our practice over time. Doesn't mean we can't look at our practice and see what may work best moving forward.
I mean, I just want to second that I didn't know prior to JP bringing it up because my kids are younger and I didn't know how much time the high school students were spending. And then it just so happened that the high school students brought it up to me in our meetings that they just thought it was a lot of time being spent in PE and that the time in the PE classes isn't always utilized in the best way. Spend, you know, kids sometimes opt to walk around the track instead of participating in whatever the activity of that session is, which is good. It's good for kids to walk around the track, but, I mean, are they exercising or are they, you know, loping around the track for 80 minutes? And it, it seems like there could be better use of their time, whether it's on academics or actually participating in the activity. I have done research since and so I think that number by that organization, it's Massachusetts Association for Health and Physical Education Recreation Dance.
Thank you.
Inc.
There's a reason why I couldn't remember all that, but Dance was in there, so I want you to say that.
I don't even know how to say it as an acronym because it doesn't make sense.
It's supposed to number.
But it's 225 was their recommendation, but again, they're just an independent organization. That's for secondary grades and 150 minutes for elementary grades. I would say, could we even explore, if, if it can't be a shorter class, does it have to be full year? Could it be part of the year so that then the other semester, they have time for academics or electives? Boston Public Schools, for instance.
Every court day rather than every other day.
Something, I mean, it'd be certainly something to look into.
Yeah, it has to work within the schedule, rotating schedule where they take, you know, eight courses. So it'd have to be some consistency, it could be quarterly-based or, there's, there's opportunities.
Yeah. Boston Public Schools, for instance, they do it one semester for all students in grades nine to 12 and 45 minutes per week for pre-K to eight. Also, it made me realize, do our kids in seventh and eighth get recess? Or does that go away once they hit here?
It goes away.
Just because I noticed other schools have recess through eighth grade, so it was something that I was curious about.
I mean, they have, they have the courtyard that they utilize and in essence, if they finish within 22 minutes, and most of them do, they do go out there and there's a basketball hoop out there and they're running around. So they're getting some exercise. It's not a scheduled every day kind of thing. I mean, in terms of they don't always get to go out, but it's, it's a good opportunity.
Interesting. I find it interesting that there's no minimum set forth on what that time should be, but there isn't. There's no state mandated minimum number of hours. That was repealed in 1996, so.
Yeah, they don't, they don't really set for, you know, I think they, they're probably cautious about being tied down to a certain number. But I think we all, you know, value the opportunity for them to get exercise, to get outside, to have a course that they may not have, you know, expectations for homework or, you know, and just a release for some of them, some more than others. So I think there's certainly benefits, but there's also benefits to their mental health, I think, to, to look at. So I think we'll look at, you know, everything combined with what the schedule, because when they schedule, there are potential limitations, but there's also potential opportunities.
So I have a couple of thoughts and it's kind of a confluence of a lot of different factors, a lot of things going on in my brain about this topic specifically. I, I agree, I think it's a lot of PE. And looking at, and I, I hear what you're saying about it being a great opportunity for movement and physical, you know, physical activity. But when we look at that block schedule as it stands now, we have PE in grades seven through 10, the same amount of time, if we don't count the plus classes, the same amount of time as they have math, English. So we're really calling PE not an elective, but a core. And I'm just thinking about where our MCAS scores are down. And there is a resolution for MASC to teach financial literacy. And, you know, my own daughter is at a vocational school and, and so much is taught in way of life skills. And we, we had Mr. Hannah speaking to us about all of these opportunities that we can offer that are vocational. I just think there are a lot of missed opportunities. And I think that where we're looking at a new schedule in the future, and I know that that's a topic or for discussion at a later date, where we're looking at a waterfall of five, drop three, that this is an opportunity to really look differently at this and look at the amount of PE that is in the, the, the week, in the year, in the six years. I think that it's a missed opportunity for us. And I think that if we look at, potentially looking at all their opportunities and courses, then that would put us kind of ahead of the curve because traditional high schools don't have financial literacy and don't have, you know, our traditional home ec or life skills classes, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's like what I would like to see is just, let's get creative. Because, I mean, and to be clear, I'm not anti, I'm wearing a YA fall baseball hoodie right now. Like I coach these kids and everything, I understand the value of, you know. Like I coach these kids and everything. I understand the value of, you know, A, them burning off energy and B, just like the mental status that goes along with the physical activity. To me, it's just weighing it the same as everything else.
And, and I agree. And we've, that's why I've talked to Mrs. Page about other opportunities. Using that time, different life skills, nutrition, financial literacy, things like that have already been discussed and kind of put out there as, let's talk more about it. Let's talk with the coordinator, let's talk with, because if it's, you know, we have to look at staffing clearly and that always plays into it, but I think there's certainly opportunity.
So I guess along those same lines, I don't, once again, new, I don't know how any of this works. If we are going to make a change like something like this, when does that need to be decided for the appropriate staffing changes that might go along with it?
Well, it would depend on, you know, if we're, you know, looking to reduce and force people and then there would be, we'd have to look at seniority and things like that, which would have a ripple effect across the district potentially. If you're reducing a, potentially a department that's going to create, you know, someone, someone's going to be, you know, reduced and then we'd be looking, we'd have to add additional staff. Or if we're looking to use staff that are existing and teach something different.
So I guess when, I guess what I'm looking for is like, is this something we kicked out of the road for a meeting, two meetings? Is this something we should start with?
I think we have to, I think we have to talk to building principal because, you know, a lot, you know, the scheduling is really building principle, you know, driven. So I think we have to look at that first, involve her.
Okay, and so you'll do that or do we do?
No, I'll do that.
Okay. I just want to make sure, if I need to be doing something, I just.
Nope, no problem. By that, we're fine involving others, but I think, you know, we have to work internally school first.
Yeah, so I think this can be an ongoing discussion. Maybe we revisit it in December. Not necessarily have any solutions in December. That is a short amount of time considering all of the, the working parts, but I don't want this conversation to be forgotten about, so.
Yeah, I would love to like have just some proposals to us at some point, you know, whenever, before whenever that decision would need to be made, I guess.
Okay.
Is all I'm looking for. And like, it doesn't need to be, you know, exact, like we can, it can be a living, breathing thing. But I just don't want to hear that we missed it because, you know, the deadline was whatever. We didn't do anything about it. That's more of a concern.
Thank you. Any other discussion on ADF or any of the other policies that we have open?
No.
Okay. So just as a reminder, we, we have a motion on the table to approve all of the open A policies as written. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passed. All right. So then we also have one more policy item. So we are going to open all policies within section B. It is a pretty massive section. So we probably are not going to review them all in a month, but hopefully we can get half of them done for the December meeting. So I'm going to make a motion to open all policies within section B for review. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passed. All right, next order of business is the budget warrant subcommittee.
Yes. Okay, so we had our first meeting with town officials looking at the budget for fiscal year 2027. That was held on October 21st. Mr. Bodwell, JP and I were all there with Jeff Ryan, Dave Gagny, and, oh, I'm blanking. Was it Jan?
Jan Fox.
Jan Fox, thank you. I blinked for a second. And, oh, and Kathy Graham, sorry. See, I'm blanking on people. I thought it was a productive conversation. I think it was well received. They had questions. It was a good conversation. We talked about potential for future staffing needs, gave updates on school choice, special education concerns. Mark gave an update on the school building project. Talked about different softwares that are used both in-town and in the school system and just kind of the things that we were seeing coming down the pipeline in terms of what we need for next year's budget. But it was overall, I think, really positive and productive.
Would you like me to schedule another meeting and if so, what's the timeframe?
Yeah, I think we're, we're meeting Thursday, right?
We're meeting Thursday, mhm.
So maybe a couple of weeks after that would probably be good. I, I don't know what cadence you guys normally do this in.
We've done October and then kind of early January, leading up to, you know, budget in February. So we have a better idea where we're headed, so probably early January.
Yeah, I think with the holidays, everything, that's probably right.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, to me, it's more important than like kind of the four of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, moving on, donations and dedications. Mrs. Myszkowski is not here with us tonight. However, she did provide the list, it's in our drive, of all of the donations and all of the grants. So we do need to vote to approve them. So I'm going to actually go through them very briefly. We don't need to go over each specific one.
Can I ask real, just before you start, I don't have access. It says I need to request access. Is anybody here that can approve that or no?
I can probably, let me, oh, hold on, let me see.
Otherwise I will.
Yep, let me, give me a second here. Perry, do you have it as well? I didn't, I saw you on there. Carrie, are you able to?
Uh, no.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Okay, so there's two of them. I just did the grants as well. Okay, so starting with the donations, I'm looking for a motion to approve these donations. They are, are a total of $33,505.44.
Motion to approve the donations.
Is there a second? All right, discussion. I mean, it's pretty straightforward here. There are quite a few individual donations, small monetary amounts. I think the, the, the big ones, there's a donation here to the Drama Club from Howard Trustees for $5,610.
So can I ask, is the third, the third field, that's where the money goes to? Like when the person makes the donation, they say, oh, this.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's what it's for. And then we have another big one from Howard Trustees is $4,810 for visiting author and books. The WB boosters, $1,000 for esports advisor position funding and a new ice machine for the training room for $7,510.91. Howard Trustees donated $10,000 for Nature's Classroom. And then the Howard Trustees also donated $1,500 for a middle school field trip to Clue. I'm not sure if that's a typo there.
It's a play.
Clue play?
It's a, it's a play, yeah, clue, a play, I guess you'd say.
Oh, okay, to the, to the play. All right, are there any questions? Okay. All in favor of approving these donations?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. And then I'm looking for a motion to accept the grants. They are total for, there's four grants here, total funding of $25,500. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the grants.
Is there a second? All right, discussion. So actually, it says there's four, but there's, looks like there's only three. So again, there's a pretty large one from the Howard Fund Trustees, $2,000 for the AI presentation for the Middle Senior High School. So $1,500 grant to the Massa, or from the Massa, for the Middle Senior High School garden supplies. It's a Massachusetts agriculture grant. And then there's a $22,000 grant for hate crimes prevention. It was a state grant written by Mrs. Yanis and received. Any questions on these?
No.
Okay, all in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved. Do we have any questions or recommendations by the committee for our next meeting? All right, so moving on, our next regular school committee meeting is December 8th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
This is done by roll call vote. So in Mrs. Myszkowski's absence, I will run the roll call. So myself, Dragonetti, yes. Lizardi?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Weech?
Yes.
All right, so Dragonetti, yes. Lizardi, yes. Waller, yes. Weech, yes. Motion passed. Have a good night, everyone.